Pardon me?
Okay.
We're good?
All right.
Yes, I will do that right away. Thank you. Good afternoon. It is Wednesday, January 21st, 2015, 4:30 in the afternoon, and we shall begin our council meeting. May I please have a roll call?
Ron Rensing.
Here.
Randy Funkert. Brad Hind.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Before we get into our agenda, I just do want to point out that Items Three and Six on our agenda, the discussion of the lot and utility addition, no action will be taken today on that. Also, Number Six, the city manager evaluation, we are postponing that to our next council meeting due to one of our council members not being able to attend today. So with that said, we'll move forward. Number One, are there any public comments? If you do have a public comment, now would be the time to come to the podium, state your name, and share your comment. There are none. We will move forward to the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments?
I'll move. Support.
Thank you, gentlemen. May I have a roll call, please?
Hind.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Rensing.
Thank you.
Aye.
As I said just a little bit ago, Number Three, no action. We'll move on to Number Four, the consideration proposal for medium improvements on 34th Avenue, and Todd has some information he's going to share with us on that.
Yeah, I guess this started by talking at the office. I was talking to Scott about the median, which is on 34th Avenue by Taco John's, McDonald's, Sheldon Plaza area. It's about 10-foot wide, I don't know, 250-foot like that. Anyways, it's hard to maintain. I don't think it looks very good. I guess you have plantings in there, but in the summertime, they really struggle to survive in that environment. The only thing that seems to do well out there is the feeds. So him and I were talking it over, and he said, "Why don't we get the prices together to see if the council have any interest in doing something different?" So what you see in the proposal is just more different to actually concrete proposals. One is just to improve the rock and the planting, go back to plain concrete. That's about $7,400. One is to go back to some colored concrete. What color, I guess, could be determined later, but something dark red like the above or any color that we chose. Third, that's $9,400. Third option is for a stamped concrete that would be sealed, like you see on a lot of decorative patios, that kind of sort of thing. That would be approximately $15,000. Or the fourth option, I really don't have a cost for because it'd be a mixture of whether you went plain concrete for so many feet and then a decorative stamp for so many feet and then back and forth. That option would fall somewhere in the middle between Number One and Number Three, depending upon how much decorative we put in. Obviously, it's quite a bit. Right.
Is this something that our city guys are gonna do that we'll work on? Or are these estimates?
These prices are not...
Okay.
...plain and colored or something. We could, or stamp, you don't have the equipment and/or...
And right now, it's plants and rock?
Right.
And weeds.
Oh, yeah. Even though there's weeds.
So just thought we'd throw it out there, see what your guys' thoughts were, see if there's any interest in doing anything, or any one feet or some feet.
Is the intent to leave the curb and just fill in where the plantings are?
Correct.
So there'd be no maintenance?
Yeah, basically, maintenance-free. That's an issue. I mean, we go out there a few times a year and spray and try to maintain it. Rocks continue to fall out. It's, I mean, just aesthetically and maintenance-wise, it's, from the get-go, we probably should've done it different, you know, from the start, but now looking at it, we feel it's something that probably needs to be improved.
Does the curb have to stay? Or could you do better flattening at all? I mean, if our snow, you're not dealing with the curb and...
I would almost keep the curb, and I don't know what your opinion is, but some people pulling out of that exit by McDonald's on the north side, if they're gonna turn left, that could be a traffic problem.
Super required to install that DOT.
Okay, good.
Required us to install that as part of that project for turning.
Right. The exit that comes out of the C store there, Greg, all of a sudden, you're gonna have people pulling in there. We couldn't have an access entrance, so many feet of Highway 18.
Do you have any money left in that account?
Yeah, what we'd recommend, if the council would approve, is use the Sheldon Crossing bond proceed funds that we have remaining.
How much do you have remaining? Sorry, Brad.
I like the idea of the color, and I really don't think the stamped you're gonna see, and people aren't gonna walk on it to see the stamped stuff.
I would agree.
I agree with Brad.
How much do we have in that account that we could use?
We have plenty for any of these projects. The remaining balance we're actually planning to use, we're looking at doing these other four blocks downtown.
Okay.
So a combination of the downtown bond proceeds and the Sheldon Crossing bond proceeds is what we would recommend using.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we do the option two of colored concrete.
Support.
Okay. Any other discussion? Comments? They would pitch that, given an angle, so water would run off and not puddle in the middle there, then?
It'd be just, the middle would be slightly higher, just enough so water.
Good. Okay. All right. Okay. Any other comments? No? May I have a roll call, please?
Gils.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hind.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
And next is the discussion of our recycling and garbage survey. Wow, did we get lots of feedback.
Don't you wanna announce the winner?
Should, have we done that yet?
I mean, I can't believe the number of people that haven't asked me who wins, and I keep telling everybody, "Win ya!"
Yeah.
Oh, I don't pay utilities. I honestly don't remember. Who'd remember?
Natalie Van Matron.
Thank you.
So we did already award the winners.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank everybody for all their comments.
Yeah.
It was good to see those results.
We did kind of the same thing as we're doing with our land use planning, to offer that three-month utilities, and we're getting an excellent response on that again, so I think that was a great idea.
Some of these comments are just a hoot. We'll leave it at that.
I think it really comes down to people don't know what day's recycling hour on, and if we could communicate that with them at the beginning of the year, I think that would help a lot.
Confusion seems to be the number one.
You know, and then first of the year, you had the holiday with no recycling, so then you went almost a month without any pickup, which was tough, too.
Sure. And then it throws them out of whack, and you forget the calendar. Right. Yep. So I think there's been some brainstorming going on amongst some of us, and do you wanna share some of those ideas? Or how do we wanna start it off?
I'll just share some general comments, I guess, and certainly fill in. I think we're kind of on the same page a little bit on what some of the highlights are. Kind of some of the obvious points or whatever is schedule is confusing. I think them trying to wrap their hands around where, I mean, you're consistent on your garbage service every week, just recycling as far as what day it falls on. A lot of the other comments that we've heard is unsure what to recycle. We've already posted more information on the website, trying to be as proactive as possible to get that information out. Lack of space, container size. You know, one thing we did wanna point out is both haulers do offer the larger can. I think the general response is they weren't interested in whether it's the city, combination with haulers, proceeding with ordering all the larger cans and then assessing a cost to collect that. That services available. If you contact Schwartz or Decreyf, you can purchase those larger cans directly from them. The other items, you know, we do have recycling containers with the city, so if you are interested, they are the smaller cans. You know, you can certainly contact us at the city offices. We have, we don't know the exact number, we do have a number of cans that are still available. One thing we can throw out, you know, we do small, charge a small nominal fee for that. Certainly for consideration, if you want us to offer some of those cans out there or reduce price or whatever it is, I mean, it's not like we're sitting on a debt out there, I guess, with those cans, and we have a number left to maybe get those cans out to be utilized. Just some thoughts on possible solutions and things we've been talking about in the office. One is schedule or calendar. Ange has already kind of been working on the possibility of making, we tried to get away from the color code of copies and getting that out there, but maybe some type of labeling of a calendar that we're more proactive about of getting it out, working with the haulers, trying to set that schedule for the entire year, trying to work around the holidays is when that actual pickup will be. The thing is, to send out a 12-month calendar could be difficult. Maybe we can do a two-month calendar at a time, do, you know, February, March on the front and the back. They can, you know, print it off, whether it's off the website. We can maybe, you know, we don't do the newsletter in our utility bills anymore. Maybe we can mail something out that way. We can make it available at the city offices. We do put the information on our website today, maybe promoting and PR-ing that a little bit more that it is on our website. We're not sure how many people actually go and hit and use our website to look at the recycling information or the schedule for all the recycling and that type of information.
Is it on the, is it on the radio?
Not to my knowledge.
Why not?
That's...
Should be. Is it in the newspaper? Should be.
No, you're, he's talking about the, you're talking about the...
Schedules. The days, yeah.
And that's, I have that same thing written down, Ron, that we work, the media outlets, the radio and the, and the newspaper, that maybe we can post in there.
Stop. Let's finish.
But it's the same route every... Is that the way you do it, too, then, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If you want us to put it on the air and in the paper, you better...
We can ask. Right.
And we can, and that's where I think a calendar specific that shows that maybe they can put on their website, that the newspaper can actually put in the paper, that shows the schedule, hey, here's, here's your recycling days to explain. I mean, we have a whole letter that goes out to new customers and whatnot. It explains it all, but when you read, it's a whole page just on garbage recycling. I mean, because they have two different days for garbage, two different days for recycling, and Decreyf has two different days for garbage, two different days for recycling. That's a lot of days to actually coordinate, you know? So we're trying to simplify it as much as possible. I didn't know if there's...
Just for clarification, 'cause I'm getting more confused the more I listen to this schedule. Do you pick me up recycling twice a month?
Yes, I do.
You do? Okay. So it's always the same?
First and third Thursday of the month.
First and third Thursday of the month is the way that works.
If you're a Sunday garbage night. Same with you, Mark? If you're a Sunday garbage night?
Yeah, if you're on Monday, it's the first garbage is gone on Monday, and if you're on the Tuesday route, it's the second and fourth.
And for you, it's second, fourth on Tuesday?
I should take a calendar for the whole year, and I can tell you exactly what days I recycle and what the holidays, I can, I can fill out the whole year if you want me to.
Yeah.
Again, I think it's a matter of where and how people access it to get it. I mean, for whatever reason, there seem to be confusion on when it is, and now I don't know if that's a lack of not interested in doing it and remembering it, putting it on their fridge and on their calendars, remember to recycle. I think we kind of created some of our own beasts with our container. I think that's taken away from the curbside recycling. You know, people are using that. To me, the purpose of that recycling container was kind of a backup.
Mm-hmm.
If you had extras, you had the holidays and whatnot to utilize that, that's becoming a primary recycle bin, and that's a cost. We pay for that service. The curbside recycling that's available is part of their cost and fee that they pay, and the more they recycle, curbside and anywhere else, is, actually helps the haulers with less they have to haul away.
And you don't charge for recycling?
I know, that's why. It's part of the existing fee that's built in there.
Right. And that's, there's some comments on there...
There's no additional fee for recycling.
Saying we can't afford it. Well, hello, they're not paying attention to what their bill is. Exactly.
It's part of the fee.
It's part of the fee.
It's part of that fee that's being charged. That's why, to put it on your curb, it doesn't cost you any extra.
Not when it was set up as.
Right. I just think...
Then why even say it?
Some of the, that's just some of the comments that we got back, and what I'm saying is those kind of comments that we got back, it just shows that people are not familiar with how the program works and runs, and they don't look closely at their bill. So, you know, some of the...
I just want it to be known that recycling is not included in your garbage.
Right. It's just part of the service.
Brad doesn't think that way.
It's part of the service. It's part of your service.
It's part of our service.
It's just part of the service. We're paying for it. Well...
Don't you, isn't it part of our service in my bill?
No.
If I decided, I didn't wanna sign the contract with the city, and I wanted to pick up garbage on my own, that I'd lose money because I didn't, because of recycling?
I assume, Jeff, that that's part of my garbage service.
That's what I said to Jeff.
I assume incorrectly.
That's what I agree.
Because then when we first started this, we asked, should we charge for recycling? We were holding up.
Okay, so...
So what you're paying the money for is for garbage.
Garbage only. Okay. I did not know that.
I can't argue that.
No, I can't, I honestly, Jeff, I thought it was just part of our...
Jeff said that to me. I said, "I can't argue whether it's right or wrong."
Not sure if it matters, but...
Yeah.
Or the city, Sioux Center, hold.
But the more, the more that's recycled is the less that's in the garbage can, which saves them with landfill costs, so...
So it is the whole circle of garbage.
To recycle is a benefit to everybody.
Okay.
You know, that's kind of our ultimate goal that we're trying to do, so...
Gotcha. So, back to our discussion of calendars, and the other question that people brought up was, what do I recycle?
That's that full-page sheet that you give.
Yeah, and we got, and we have already posted on our website. We make it available. We're trying to make it more available, and how we explain and give that to the new customers, especially that come to town not knowing what the recycling service is.
Someone mentioned to me a magnet. I seen, I have one at home, a magnet I got from somebody.
One second. Mr. Decreyf, do you have...
Well, but I mean, that they put on their, like on their refrigerator or something, to hold that schedule is what I'm getting at, or whatever.
That's what I think.
I don't know.
Go ahead, share your comment, and then we'll...
The list they get for what's recyclable, that comes from the landfill.
Right.
Anything to do with all.
Oh, right. No, yeah, and I'm not even saying that. But what I'm saying is if we did have, you know, we get our Sheldon magnets that all zero your information of who's who and what to call. I wonder what that cost would be to come up with a magnet that has, this is what you can recycle, with a calendar on there with just color-coded, I know, who, sorry?
A 12-month calendar, I mean, with a magnet, it's not gonna be possible. I mean, you could describe, like, what we have on our one sheet of what, you know, Schwartz and what Decreyf does with pickup.
You couldn't do it 12 months, you don't think?
No, I had, I just think it'd become pretty small. I mean, I haven't looked into it, and we gladly will, but I don't see how you could do 12 months.
I think you're gonna end up losing it. I mean, who's gonna hang on to it for 12 months?
Well, magnet, I'm sticking it on my fridge.
A magnet, maybe, but I'm afraid you're gonna have a big magnet on the fridge.
Bonnie, you have your hand up. What's that? Oh, yeah. Yep. But how many people actually sit and watch that? But I'm just, right. Well, that's just another source. We can do the newspaper, we can, radio, sorry about that, I looked at you wrong. HTC does it, we can put it possibly in with our water bills, but...
And we do. That's why, I mean, we're trying to figure out, is there more we can do that we're not doing? Do we need to send it out every month again just for recycling? I mean, we kind of went away from the newsletter, and we still probably five, six times a year have different stuffers that go on our utility bills for various items, you know, so we have room that we could put more in regards to the schedule or recycling-type items that we send out. I just don't, I mean, we're looking for feedback, I guess, on other areas. I think the radio and media and newspaper would help of maybe weekly hitting that.
What run?
Do either one of you have any idea in terms of, like, Orange City or Sibley or Rock Rapids or Sioux Center or the Valley? Is their recycling tonnage a lot more than ours? There's a comparable? Do you have any idea? Do you know, Brad? I guess what I'm curious is if this is just... But I know I talked to... A human being problem, or whether it's a Sheldon problem? I talked to Les Bromer about it from Sioux Center, and beginning of the year, he sends out a calendar to his customers and tells them what day they have garbage on, and he knows for a year... Garbage and recycling? Recycling. He knows for a year what day your recycling's gonna be on. Does it first of the year, every year.
What if we tried the two calendars? I really don't think we need a calendar that is, that's this big in our water bill. What if we could do a quarter? You know, have four months? Or three months? And what you recycle on the other side? I don't know. What's that gonna take and cost? And how many?
Oh, you got 1,800 water hookups.
Right.
That's about how many.
Is that how many households are served?
I, that's what I...
It's about how many utility bills we send out every month, 1,800?
Bonnie? Yeah? Share. I just don't get this.
When I read this, Bonnie?
Pardon?
When I read this survey, I sent the council all an email, and I said, "She loves me? No, she doesn't." "It's on Tuesday? No, it's on Wednesday."
Yeah.
What about if we would send out a one-time reminder, just a heads-up of what it is? That way, people have it. We can say we did it, clarify it, ease of mind, and also attach what can be recycled on that same one-time reminder.
We have, and we can, you know, do it again and again.
Is the route the confusion? You know, I mean, is understanding the routes, is that a confusion? Is that complicated?
I don't think it is, but they, it appears to be that way. That's what they say, that it's confusing when my...
Jeez, do I get confused. Wow. I gotta be a Hollander.
In my household, it's confusing for me. My wife understands it. And we do it, so this is...
Say that over date.
Scott, what day do you get your garbage picked up?
Tuesday.
Okay, you're the second and the fourth Thursday. How tough is that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying it is tough.
No.
I think we're, some of us are in the minority, though, 'cause some...
When you hear Monday, that's the first and third. You hear Tuesday, that's the second and fourth.
Same with you.
Something's not working, though, because, yeah.
Well... I think it would be nice, out of curiosity, someone out once, just send out a...
I just, wild thought, what happens if you had to pick up the whole town, the first and third? Would that work?
And nobody else the second and fourth?
Well, do your route, both your routes on the first and third.
The first and third, and nobody else the second and fourth.
I'm just saying...
Same place we are now.
If you did your, all your customers on the first and third?
I understand that.
Would that work?
What am I gonna do on the second and fourth? Nobody?
Nobody.
Would be in the same boat we're in now.
Do you think that would help, less confusion?
I do. We actually talked about that in the office. Everybody knows it's the first and third regardless of what hauler you are, that the first and third is when recycling is, period.
First week and third week.
Yes.
First and third.
First and third Thursday. Less with the holidays, we'd have different holidays we'd have to work around.
See, that's what I'm confused. 'Cause they have different routes.
That doesn't matter with garbage, though, does it? Would it matter? Yeah. Why do you need to have recycling on a different day than what your, would it hurt to switch your recycling day? But I mean, if you have different garbage, but if you have different garbage pickup days, if I had my garbage picked up on Sunday night or on Monday night, I wouldn't care of whether my recycling's picked up on Thursday or on Friday. So if both haulers is everybody's on, everybody's on the first and third Thursday, period, unless it falls on a holiday.
So regardless...
Then at least it's consistent for both haulers in town. That'd be less confusing. It's a lot easier to explain from the office standpoint.
Would you be able to get everything on just going out twice a month and recycling?
That's what they're doing now, they're just splitting up their customers. It's not anymore. It's just they're doing it on one day instead of two days.
I won't have 50 customers today.
Yeah.
I'm riding around for four hours, 50 customers.
So...
Yeah, and that's what we're asking, I guess. I mean, if there's reasons that it doesn't, that's completely understandable, but trying to simplify it is all we're trying to do.
If it worked, it'd be nice to have...
And especially if everybody recycled the way they're supposed to, well, then that'd be a good problem if you can't pick it all up.
So, back to the beginning of the drawing board.
Education, I guess, that's the key.
I mean, the last thing we can do is go to their house and help recycle when they put it out.
Are we in agreement that we don't wanna buy another container?
Absolutely not.
Is there, is there grants available? We got the big dumpster.
I don't think we wanna get into that, though, do we?
But if we can get the money on a grant...
Then you're just gonna have more people not doing curbside, and we have to have that.
No, that's not what I said. I said, "We got the big container on a grant."
For the cans.
Can we get bigger cans on a grant?
Potentially grant funds available.
Oh, bigger cans for the houses, not for out here in the park.
'Cause that's the other thing you hear is, the cans are too small. And I will admit, the cans are too small, and we started out...
We're over...
The thought is, go buy a big one, unless you...
But can we get a grant for it?
Potentially.
That's what I think we should look at. We got the grant for the big roll-off.
But there were also comments saying they don't want bigger containers.
Yeah.
I mean.
But if there are no costs.
Right.
Some of the older people.
They're against the cost.
The elderly people complained about the size of the big cans.
Yeah, can's too small, can's too big.
It never runs one. They're 70-plus years old. She loves it. So.
So I wouldn't, I think we should look into if there's a grant to get a larger recycling container.
Well, I think we should investigate. I agree with that.
Absolutely.
Something with the lid?
Yes.
Lids wasn't.
Yeah.
Similar to what they have now.
They have now.
But that's, I know they say.
And use more communication, see if we can coordinate with the radio, with the newspaper, with Channel 3 or whatever, but it's confusing.
Because with the newspaper, we have on that inside column, what happens.
Yeah, it is. You're right, Frank.
Ultimately, it takes a little thought, though, by the person, a little responsibility.
Like you said, Bonnie, what more can we do? We're going to educate them. I mean, we can't go and hold everybody's hand and take their recycling out for them every night. We just need to be better citizens about our recycling program, marking it in our calendars. You can check into larger containers, possibly put out a calendar.
That sounds good.
And maybe when we send out a information, instead of a lot of garble and mumbo jumbo, just make it simple. Schwartz, Monday, recycle, blah blah. Or, you know, I, I did see the one letter you had, and that was overwhelming and confusing after you start reading down the page, so.
That's basically what we have to do, to give everybody the information, because not everybody is the same. We don't know where the garbage haulers' cutoffs are for Monday versus Tuesday pickup. So depend, when new people come in, depending where they're moving to, we don't know when their garbage is picked up.
We really can't simply find them before show.
So we're constantly going through every scenario with them, depending on where they live. And we do, we do. We tell them they need to call you to start their service.
Every one of them, it's right on there.
So, in, in the midst of confusion, call your hauler to clarify when you.
We tell them a lot. It's a matter of listening and reading.
Right.
You know, we can help them if they don't come.
That's what, that's what we can do as a city, is just if they have a question, call your hauler. So we don't have to try to, we don't want to tell them the wrong information.
What, you know, we talked about this, you asked, and we all agreed that we don't want the bigger container. What is the cost annually, what does it cost in the city to empty that thing?
How many times do we empty it an hour, Mark?
Once a week. So when we get it emptied, it's usually once a week.
So 52 times.
Fifty bucks, times.
25 under, 20.
Don't tell everybody that, because it'll be full the next morning. I'm just kidding.
Then it's full on Monday already.
Yeah.
So there's stuff sitting outside.
Every week, and it's 50 bucks a month, you say?
A week.
A week?
It's a week, every time it's done.
Jeez. Yeah, I don't think we should get another one of those. It's nice to have it for overflow.
We're required by DNR to have curbside recycling, so if we get another container, we're going to eliminate virtually all of curbside recycling, so that's, in my view, not the solution.
No.
To me, that's the backup.
Exactly.
I mean, it's, the problem is it's becoming a primary. I think curbside should be our primary.
It wouldn't be so bad if I could dump it once or twice a week, like during the holidays, but the landfill just, I can bring it out Tuesday or Wednesday morning right away, and that's it.
Sure.
So you're, you're unlimited when I can bring it out two. That's the hard part, too, I guess.
Because they have other towns dumping the other days.
Sure.
They're full.
Yep. Okay, so I think what we've come down to is first, we're going to, we're going to research if there is a grant for a larger container for the home for recycling, right? And then put out a blast in our water bill about what can be recycled, and if you have questions on when your date of recycle pickup is, call your hauler. How was that? Or do we print a calendar?
Reiterate, it's already posted and available on the website.
Good?
Yeah.
Because if we print up a calendar and we happen to be incorrect, I would rather them just call you.
If they got any questions, they call me. Don't, don't call the city.
That's a great, that's a great answer.
Yeah.
Their route is on Tuesday, I can say, okay, here's a calendar, choose for Tuesday.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
You guys should do that.
Yep.
Great.
Sure. It's not rocket science, but, but it, we'll get to it. Okay.
I've had a couple, while we're talking garbage, has the fuel surcharge been adjusted?
It has. Actually, for this month, the fuel price dropped, I don't know, was it to 69 or 289, it was on the 15th, so it dropped down to 50 cents. And I know there were some comments in regards to the fuel surcharge. We do have a sheet that is based on the diesel price formula, so that's kind of already set in place. Once it drops below 249, we look at the 15th of every month, what that diesel fuel price is. This, there'd be no surcharge if it's at the base rate, which is $2.49 and below. So right now, I think it's at 269 or 289 is what Pat said when she looked the other day, so the rate will be 50 cents on the next surcharge.
And I've had some comments last week about it, when we were talking about garbage again.
Yep.
Uh, yes, Dave.
The public probably doesn't realize that your billing isn't theirs, though.
Yeah.
They look at that price today and think, oh, that's the price we're going to pay this month.
No.
But really, they're getting billed for last, last price, or less.
Yeah. We talked about that in the office, too. I mean, the last time we looked at the price was December 15. Well, that's a pretty big difference over 30 days, what the prices drop, so. Good point, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, is there any other discussion then on our garbage and recycling?
Nope.
Let's move forward. Thank you, everyone, for your input and letting us know their stuff I didn't know, and you just informed me, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Jeff,